Thank you, everyone, for coming. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the non-public to after the city council meeting.
So moved, Your Honor. Is that it?
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, let's have a roll call.
Mayor McCackren?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Counselor Taber?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Moreau?
Here.
Counselor Bagley?
Here.
Counselor Lombardi?
Here.
Counselor Blaylock will be joining us shortly. Counselor Cook?
Here.
Thank you. For tonight's invocation, it's been a little more than a week since Portsmouth lost Quarius Dunham. I would like to take the time for us to think of him and his parents. We will never know that type of grief, but I hope that when his parents do return to Portsmouth, we can show them the love of our community in a way that I expect Portsmouth to be able to. There is a GoFundMe to cover the expenses that's been shared in a number of locations. If anybody has a question on that, please reach out to me directly. And just reading through everything over the last week, it seems that everybody that knew him lost a best friend that day, and it is just incredibly sad. So a moment of silence for Quarius. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two proclamations this evening. First, Men's Health Month. I like this one because it reminds me that Father's Day is coming up. It should serve as a reminder to everyone as well. Whereas June is Men's Health Month and Men's Health Week, recognized since 1994 by an act of Congress, is the week ending on Father's Day, which is June 13th to 19th, 2022. And whereas educating the public about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will help reduce rates of mortality. And whereas Men's Health Month is a time for the public to recognize the mental and physical health needs of men and boys while encouraging fathers to be role models for their children. And whereas Men's Health Month focuses this year in particular on mental health and ongoing challenges of identifying and serving those most in need without social stigma. And whereas the Men's Health Network has worked with Congress to declare June Men's Health Month and encourages people to wear blue for men's health to increase national awareness about the importance of positive men's health attitudes and practices. And whereas the citizens of this city are encouraged to recognize the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now, therefore, I, Deglin McCackren, mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the city council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim June as Men's Health Month, given with my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on this first day of June 2022. Next, we have a proclamation that I've read actually twice before, both at the pride flag raising and again at the high school, and I wanted to take the opportunity to read it here in council chambers for LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas June is LGBTQ plus Pride Month, created in 1999 to remember the Stonewall uprising in Manhattan in June 1969. And whereas pride messages are the most visible symbol of the global movement of the LGBTQ equality, celebrating progress, affirming the existence of LGBTQ people, and demanding recognition of their basic human rights. And whereas pride marches such as the one each year here in Portsmouth are an expression of the basic right to freedom of assembly and expression. And whereas first among the city's goals is to welcome and support diversity in the workplace and community. And whereas the city's mission statement says the city is committed to establishing and maintaining a diverse, fiscally sound municipality and a safe and welcoming environment, and that means making sure our LGBTQ community can prosper here. And whereas being the city of the open door means living up to the promises of keeping our doors open to every member of this community. Now, therefore, I, Deglin McCackren, mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the city council and the citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, given with my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on this first day of June 2022. Thank you for both of those. Next, there are no minutes this week. And now, the next two items are some of my most proud moments that I get to speak. That's why we have all of these kids here today. And it's really, you know, amazing to see just how many champions that we have in Portsmouth from so many different levels. I can't remember just a plethora of riches, so I'm so excited to be able to recognize tonight's Portsmouth High School debate team for their outstanding performance, persisting even during the pandemic with online tournaments. The team has enjoyed an undefeated record after competing in New York, Massachusetts, Texas, and here in New Hampshire. Now, members of the team are competing at the Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky, and in the Coolidge Cup, which is a national tournament held in Plymouth, Vermont. And congratulations to Coach Joseph Kraus, the Portsmouth High School English and Debate teacher, who has guided the debate team to Nationals for three consecutive years, and before doing that was the debate teacher to our assistant mayor. So if you guys aren't careful, you'll end up on this side of the podium and get to take away your Monday nights. But I would like to come down and call up first the seven members of the team that are graduating and then for the remainder. So I'm going to come down, grab the mic, and if you would, please come up when I call your name. All right. First up, is this working, looking back? All right. Undefeated captain Sam Born. Thank you, Sam. And so just in these bags, we have a T-shirt. If they don't fit, also put my card in there and, you know, try not to use it on parking tickets. Undefeated captain Josie Sedum. Captain Avery Sinclair. Will Marginson. Rio Marcus. Dad's looking at, I don't know. All right. Francis Powell. And Molly Mikinen. Did I get that right? And also, congratulations to the new team captain, Marlon Pinto and Haley Venuto. Miles Bourne. Ian Frannis. Alex O'Neil and Adam Hoskins. So are you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, did? Oh, no, no, no. Start this over. Marlon Pinto. Next up, Miles Bourne. Thank you. Ian Frannis. Alex O'Neil. And Adam Hoskins. Well, thank you again. Oh. Oh, Haley Venuto. Thank you. All right. I don't think I've missed anybody now. Thank you for speaking up. And again, it's a real honor to be surrounded by people that are able to express their feelings and win an argument in a way that is, you know, you'll find that that skill is something that serves you well in life, and all of Portsmouth is better served by having you represent us both in Nationals and in Vermont. We're so proud of you and wish you the best of luck. All right, next up, and we can applaud. I'm going to stay down here because it'd be weird if I went back and just read that little part. Our congratulations to the Portsmouth High School trivia team. Hannah Duel, the, oh, wait, hold on. Is there, we got to get their coach here. Sorry. Let's see. Joseph, could you please come up? I'm actually the first one to get it, so I'm opening your present for you.
Sure.
But in the city of the open door, we had these made, and they're doorstops. So you've kept the door open for so many people. I'm sorry to open your present for you, but I was. But hopefully you will find at least amusement, if not use, out of that. And we're so proud to have you as a teacher and a coach, keeping the door open for so many of our young students.
Thank you so much.
Now on to the trivia team. Hannah Duel, the advisor to our trivia team, tells me for the past four years, the team has played weekly trivia Tuesday games in her classroom. To practice, they've been using Granite State Challenge Quiz Bowl and general trivia questions and topics, including math, science, literature, and pop culture. Their goal was to win the championship for Portsmouth, and this year they have triumphed by winning the 40th anniversary. It's hard to believe that this is only 40 years old because I remember this as long as I was alive, and that's because it's two years older than me, but the Granite State Challenge championship. The last time that we won that, brought that cup home to Portsmouth, it was 30 years ago. So that's a pretty big accomplishment. Let's applaud that. This team also won the main Quiz Bowl, which is great. We go across the river and nab that, which earned them a place in the Quiz Bowl Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia. Best of all, Ms. Duel said, "This team has a broad range of interests and specialties within trivia, but what binds us all together is a love for knowledge and determination to have fun." Congratulations to everyone and to the seniors. Francis Powell, team captain. Josie Sedum. Thanks again. Rio Marcus. Karina Havaleško. And to Nick Dalen, is he here? Nick? All right. He's the junior who's going to carry on the torch. And Ms. Duel, are you here? Right, come on up.
Is that your trophy?
Yeah, is that the trophy?
Wow.
Yeah, you got to bring it up.
Picture with that trophy.
Oh, that's great.
I don't know. I guess we don't have a, no, we can't take a picture of me in the trophy. We can do a selfie here with that. This is probably the first selfie at a city council meeting. All right, here we go. We got it? All right. Perfect. Stephanie, okay, we don't have to do the selfie. All right. Yeah, bring this to everybody up.
Kids, get up.
I think maybe put the trophy on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in front of you. Great job, guys. Let's take your pictures. Can we bring the debate?
Debate team, if you wouldn't mind, just come up and take a picture. This way, Rio's dad doesn't have to worry about it.
There, there's some duplicates there. Maybe leave the table out a little bit. This table isn't doing the guys any favors.
Thanks so much. No, guys, if you have, you want to do some more, but I appreciate you guys coming.
I'm thinking the seniors are going to take it.
Oh, I missed the opportunity.
Nutrition, that is the, it's good.
All right. Now the real debate team.
It's like, it's kind of coming down. We have trees and greenery.
Yes. And so next up, we have a report on the Trees and Greenery Committee. Is this a verbal report?
It would be for the council to receive the committee's report. It's an annual requirement in your packet.
And it's in the packet. Thank you. Trees and Greenery. And now, we've come to the public comments session, and I have here the list. And since we, I, not the council, I gavelled the public hearing short last time. We need to vote to suspend the rules in order to allow a more public hearing-type format of more than three minutes. I would ask that you keep the three minutes in your heart and your head, but if we could have that motion.
Your Honor, I'd move we reopen the public hearing on the budget resolutions.
Sorry, second that.
Okay, that's another way to do it. And all in favor? Aye. My only question is, did we need to suspend the rules in order to do that? City Attorney?
Eating dinner.
Is he eating dinner there? We don't? Okay, great. Okay, so first up, we have Peter Whalen.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Peter Whalen. I live at 100 Gate Street. And I'm just going to reiterate some of the comments I made before. You know, and I want to ask each one of you, you know, do you really represent the taxpayers of this city? And that's when you were sworn in as city councilors, you're supposed to represent all of us, and especially the taxpayers. And I look at the budget this year. Two years ago, the budget was $119 million. The next year was $123. This year, it's going to be $133 or $131. I'm not sure where it's going to be, but that's one of the largest increase ever in Portsmouth's history in budgets. The largest increase ever. And you were all sworn in as city councilors to make Portsmouth affordable. And with that type of budget, you're going to be driving out a lot of long-term residents that are here on fixed incomes that you all represent, that makes Portsmouth what it is. 27 new positions. The head count's gone from 700 in 2010 to over 900 this year. 27 new positions. That's one of the largest ever in one year. I would ask you, what are each one of those positions going to give this city? This is all about services. I haven't heard anyone screaming that they're not getting their garbage picked up, or the roads aren't being plowed, or things aren't happening. There's none of that. We have excellent services. We have an excellent city staff here. But with the 27 new positions comes pensions, more salary increases, that's a fixed cost that compounds year after year. Your job is really to slow city spending and protect the residents. That's what you were sworn to do. And this budget doesn't do that. And I would urge you not to vote to approve this budget. On Resolution 11, which is the biggest part of it, I would table that, and I would do another work session to try to bring this budget down. That's your duty as city councilors. You know, the 10,000-pound gorilla in the room is, you're giving the police and fire department 4% raises outside of collective bargaining. That's outside of collective bargaining. That 4% compounds year after year after year, and that becomes a pension liability in future years. If you're going to do that, reopen the contract, totally reopen the contract and negotiate it. That's, that's Labor Management 101. I negotiated for years with Teamsters. If we had to do something like this, we always reopen the contract, get something for it. I'm not saying the police and fire don't deserve more money, but this is not the way to do this. There's other ways to handle that. You could have given everybody a one-time bonus program. If you have problems hiring people, use a bonus to bring them in, but you're adding to the fixed costs here year after year. It's not a prudent way to do business. If you had your own company, would you give everyone a 4% raise and you compound it year after year? You know, they collectively bargain their wages. That's the way it works. We have union contracts. If you're doing it for police and fire, what are the teachers? Are the teachers going to come to you next year and want another 4% outside of the contract? What about all the workers, the city workers, other people? It's not fair. I don't see any pushback at all. That's what bothers me. There's no pushback on city staff with the city manager with his budget. No pushback. Your obligation is really to represent the taxpayers. Get into the numbers and push back hard. The other thing that's coming is we have a reevaluation coming this year. Now, some will say, well, the tax rate's going to go down, but, you know, if you live in Elwin Park and your house was worth $400,000, and now it's worth $700,000, you're going to get a big tax bill next year, a huge tax bill. So I would urge you on Resolution 11, which is the major one, to punt on that this time. Have another work session. Don't pass it tonight. Go back through the numbers. You can find another $3 million in this budget. It's there. You just got to work at it. I mean, I came to and watched a lot of the work sessions, a lot of softball questions from all of you. There was no pushback. Councilor Tabor did some, was the only one, really, to push hard. But that's your job. I mean, this is what it's all about, you know, when you become a city councillor. You're supposed to push back, manage the budget, and represent the residents of Portsmouth. I know it's a tough job, but you got to do it, and we're all counting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up, Christine Luskey. Sorry, Christina.
Christina Luskey, 94 Odiorne Point Road, Portsmouth. If this budget is approved without any changes, or with only minor changes, it will show that the Portsmouth taxpayer is not a high priority for this city council. When this council was elected, Councilor Tabor was quoted as saying that, "Now, things are back to the way they were before. Unfortunately, this will be true if you give away the store to special interest groups at the expense of the taxpayer, instead of putting first the best interests of the city as a whole. At a time when residents are coping with inflation and are worrying about revaluations, this is not the right time to be adding a large number of new employees. A hiring freeze would be more appropriate, or at most, perhaps, one or two truly essential new hires could be made. It doesn't matter if workers are hired now or in six months. Either way, the costs will be with us for a very long time. This council has already made decisions regarding revenue, which will hurt the taxpayer. We'll have to make up for a great deal of lost parking revenue due to outdoor dining, which is scheduled to last until late November after Black Friday, which will hurt our downtown retailers during the Christmas shopping season. Now, to add this, to add to this new spending in this bloated budget will stress the taxpayer even more. There is no excuse for this big tax increase. Our previous council delivered the lowest rate of tax increase in a decade during the height of the pandemic, when closed businesses reduced revenue. I urge you to exercise some self-control and tough love by saying no to excessive spending demands by special interests and city management. I appeal to our mayor and assistant mayor, who have both championed the cause of affordable housing. Passing this tax-increasing budget will make housing in Portsmouth much less affordable. It is not enough to offer some tax relief to a limited number of residents fitting into special categories. You must meaningfully reduce this budget to offer more relief to all of our city's taxpayers. Don't forget that we still don't know how much taxpayers will be asked to contribute to the McIntyre Project. If you burden us too much with this year's budget, it will only make things even worse in the future. Don't let Portsmouth taxpayers be the only ones making sacrifices. Surely, the city management and some of our departments can be asked to reduce their demands. We're all in this together."
Thank you, Christina. Next up, Rick Beckstead.
Good evening, Rick Beckstead, 1395 Islington Street. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for extending the public hearing session as promised. I did not attend the last work section, simply because I thought I had pointed out perfectly clear, and I was in hopes that somebody was going to ask the question about the $3.1 million that is built into this budget, taken off of the previous years. We, as a council, in the previous, went and did a, was it $123.2 million budget? You all, a little while back, added $900,000 to that for a payout for a lawsuit. And this previous council also added $2.2 million for a skateboard park. And I understand the questions, and everyone says whether we have the skateboard park money or not. I watched Mayor McKecon the last time give a, basically a simple synopsis that it's there, and it's also in the CIP. So we took out an unassigned fund balance, a one-time expenditure, and put $2.2 million. The city manager went and put the expenditure on top of what this year's budget, which is about to close. It doesn't need to be there a second time, and it's there. It's there. And I've got no explanation, and if I'm wrong, please, somebody tell me that I'm wrong. There are $3 million already built into this budget with literally a magic wand, $3.1 million, and it doesn't cut anything, any of the jobs, any of the insurance, anything that's been added on this budget on top of. A simple motion to grant, it doesn't have to come out of anything, to deduct $3.1 million from the proposed, like, like one of the previous speakers said, $131, $132 million. That's it. Simple, done. I've got no explanation. It's the reason why I didn't come down here the last time. So I'm here to basically ask again, somebody please explain to me if I'm wrong. So from the previous one that I did attend, I've got your little chart here that Judy graciously went and put together for us, and I think everyone is comfortable. So a median, single-family residential home in Portsmouth is $478,050. What you're not asking, the question is, is that's before the evaluation, the reevaluation that's about to come. And we all know what the, the cost of housing and what it's going to cost all of us. And I'm predicting, and I've had conversations, we're looking at a 20% to 30% increase on the value of homes, because that's what's done. Portsmouth's that popular. Outsiders from all over the world have come here and purchased homes, and not through banks. They paid cash. I personally witnessed cash, cash going above and beyond what the asking price was. So when you start adding those numbers of 20%, 30%, 20% is $573,600. Now, you've got to go and find out what the cost of that's going to be on every taxpayer on a home that was less than a half a million dollars, which is now just under $6. And if it's $30 million, I pray to God it isn't, that's $621,000. These numbers do not reflect what the reevaluation is. This is a tough job. It's, it's like predicting the future. You know, Roseanne is out there right now with the, with the, with, with the tax reassessment, trying to figure out where the balance is going to be. But I mean, literally, it's here. These numbers do not reflect this, you know, $18 per month to every household. It's not going to be that. These numbers are based on what the numbers are before the reevaluation, period. That's what you're here for. Now, I know you made some suggestions, and you give numbers, $1 million, $1.5 million, Councilor Tabor, you had gone and kind of thrown out there, Council Lombardi, you had gone, Council Cook, you were right there, and so was Council Blaylock, which is great. But again, it's not enough. Is this the time to add 27 positions? You have the ability and the right to go and ask the city manager. She works for you. You work for the residents and the taxpayers. Now, I know some of you are going to go and say by you going and doing that, you are basically telling her how to do her job, but in fact, you're doing yours, exactly what every taxpayer and every voter voted for you in the positions that you're in today. Not easy positions. I served four years. It's not easy. It's not supposed to be. I mean, you put your name on a ballot, and here you are. And now you've got to make the best of it, and you've got to dive in and ask the hard questions, and do your jobs and represent all of us. Please, these numbers are inaccurate. These are not true. You've got to do a better job than that. This is not the time to expand. 4%, 5% as far as the cola? I think most people in Portsmouth believe that it would be something feasible. Don't add the 27 positions. Don't go hiking things through. We're all here. We're supposed to be together. This is supposed to be a joint. Mayor McKecon, you said you were going to really try to go and fix this divide with everything, but I feel honestly that we're divided more than we've ever been before. And by passing this budget tonight, without going to review, just like previous councillor Whalen had gone and said, to really look at this numbers harder, you have time. You have until the end of the month. Please do the right thing for the residents of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is Sue Palladoura.
Hello, Sue Palladoura, 245 Middle Street. I just want to reiterate again, as I've happened many times, the need to live within our knees as far as the budget. There are signs that we're heading in the troubled waters. When you see all the big investors out there pulling back and saying, "We're afraid. We need to cut back." It is not appropriate for Portsmouth or New Hampshire in general to do the opposite of what they're doing. We're going full steam ahead with this expenditure. What everybody else that knows how to manage money and manage it well is going in the opposite direction. One thing that I would like to bring to your attention is a comment that stuck with me last, from last time, and that was from former councillor Esther Kennedy. She said that there was $140 million in cash being in certain different little buckets in our budget. I'm like, you need to look into that, because there is $140 million cash. Why are you putting $10 million more on top of the tax burden to the taxpayer? Shouldn't you be using your, the money that you already have to counterbalance instead of passing, passing it on to the taxpayers? I would like to know where that $140 million is, whether this is accurate or not. You are the ones that are responsible for that, and I would like to request that something be done, and you tell us. Where is, does this money exist? Why is, is it not being used to offset expenses in the time when we need to? So I would appreciate your attention on that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Next up, Nancy Clayberg.
Good evening, everyone. Is it okay that I have Margot Peabody, our vice chair, with me? Our remarks are brief.
Yeah, so just for anybody listening now, since we all continue to go through the list, but if somebody has not signed up on the list, since we have opened a public hearing, I will entertain additional speakers, so go right ahead.
Okay, we're, we're brief, trust me. Good evening. I am Nancy Noveline Clayberg, Chair of the School Board, and this is Margot Peabody, the Vice Chair of the School Board. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of this budget, particularly the school side. If I could speak on behalf of our schools and the hardships our students and staff have, have endured because of COVID, I am grateful that the council is so supportive of our needs. Yes, these areas, these are areas that Esser can cover. However, as you know, these funds dry up, and we add positions through Esser that are crucial to the well-being of our students and staff. We want to ensure that these positions will be funded in the future. So as someone said to me today, "We'll be back." Please consider this. As you review the budget tonight, I remember when I was a city councillor, approving the budget was a daunting task. I have faith in you that you will make a decision that benefits all of our citizens. Good luck.
As you well know, the school board has a goal of wellness and equity, and over the last two years, we continue to hear from students, parents, faculty, and administrators that our community is struggling, that our kids are struggling. I'm a parent, I'm an educator, and I'm a taxpayer, and I stand before you and remind you that it's time to put the interest in our students, who will be the future citizens of this city. So I, I appreciate what you've looked at, and I just hope that you'll consider the needs of the students, and we make a commitment to full-time positions for their needs going forward. Thank you.
And thank you, mayor, for your acknowledgement of our student that passed away last week.
And thank you, Mayor, for your acknowledgement of our student that passed away last week. Our community has certainly been tragically affected by that, and we appreciate the support of the council, and you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you both. Next up is Zalita Morgan.
Thanks for having this time for us to speak. I missed the students here, but I want to say thank you for creating that space to honor the students and the work they did, they do. It's really, it's very important for all of us as a community and for the students to feel honored and really recognized in how well they represent, you know, our community in all that they do. What brings me here tonight is the budget you have in front of you. You know, some people believe that budgets are moral statements, and I, I've always shone away from that path, but I kind of want to reflect, want to say that for sure, a budget does reflect the values of a community. That's, um, that's for sure. In New Hampshire, we have a regressive taxation system, one that relies solely not on one's ability to pay, but on the market value of the properties, and the speculation that comes on a city like ours, hot market, real estate market. So, Mayor McKecon, I think you remembered that back in March, we exchanged a little conversation on the affordability, we talked about affordable housing, and I asked, you know, how are we going to approach ensuring that residents in our community, the protected social fabric of our community, and that residents on limited or, or, uh, or fixed income would still be able to afford being here in their homes, right? Well, needless to say, that so many neighbors, you know, as they heard about the budget increase and knowing of the reevaluation, they are absolutely alarmed, and with all reason. What you have in front of you and the request for 27 positions, and here I'm saying that I probably, I haven't seen all the data, but what I have witnessed, I was sitting here for, I think, the municipal budget for part of the time, I didn't see really much data. I think data, data, you know, and analysis of the data. I saw a lot of, uh, statements of we need in order to accomplish this, in order to accomplish that. The planning director got closer to provide really graphics with the data and, and what exactly she brought in when putting the, um, um, other, her case. So I think it's, you know perfectly well that approving these, this increase will stay, this, you know, capex, right? So they're going to be in our operations. So you won't be able to decrease those expenses. Once you approve, they are going to be there. New heads, new positions, and maybe not all of them need to be at this time around. It's a lot, considering that we have a reevaluation coming up. And I think this is what, you know, I want to, to press on you. The decision you have here, and I think you, you'll be approving as is, you know, it has an incredible, incredible, um, impact to the social fabric of our community. So, how can you talk about affordability, affordable housing? There is no affordable housing, because we know landlords will just raise the price of the rents. Who will be able to pay the rents? And then people put on the market for short-term rentals, because we know that happens already. All you have to do is do VRBO, you know, and you're going to see a listing Portsmouth of the properties that are already doing VRBOs and short-term rentals. Whether approved or not, I, I'm not getting to that. So, um, who are we building our community for? Who is gaining and who is losing? If you're really concerned, if you have right now a committee to talk about, you know, diversity, inclusiveness, how can we address this if you are not starting by how we spend? And here I want to say, I'm not saying that all positions are not, you know, valid, I'm saying, is this the time to bring forward 27 new heads? Is that the time? Thank you for your service, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Zalita. Next up, Elizabeth Barrett.
Hi, council members. Thank you for the, um, uh, work that you all have done on this council. I really appreciate that you all are striving towards what you set your minds to when you were campaigning, um, and to help create a better Portsmouth. I understand that you are in a tough position tonight, and I appreciate, from the School Board perspective, although I don't speak, I speak only for myself and not the entirety of the board, I understand what you're asking the School Board to do with cutting, uh, 400,000 of our proposed budget, or asking that we utilize Esser funds for that 400,000 amount in, uh, doing what you can to potentially decrease the budget. However, I understand most of you did run on the fact that, um, and, and were elected on the fact that you were dedicated to fully funding our schools. Um, I do understand that we are requesting an increase at this time, however, I do want everybody, um, our community as well as you all, to understand that, um, almost six FTEs were cut in the past council last year. So essentially, we are bringing back those FTEs and requesting about approximately 4.5 more FTEs. So when you are considering the budget and considering whether you want to move forward with what the, the School Board has proposed, I'd ask that you consider that and consider the fact that, um, these positions are necessary, and as, um, Chair Clayberg stated, we will be back again, because we need to hire for these positions. And part of hiring for these positions is that those applying will see that that is a position that we are committed to, and it's not a one-time, one-off Esser fund situation. Um, I'm also concerned with the fact that, um, we have, uh, special needs that are going to end up increasing, um, and I think the School Board would commit that, um, you know, at least I would commit, that if we are able to make cuts throughout the next year, that we would utilize those funds in the best way possible, or the city would obviously maintain those funds. But I think it's extremely important that we fully fund these positions. And the School Board presented this budget, or my understanding is I presented, and I agreed on this budget, because there were other things that we wanted to consider for the Esser funds. Um, our schools desperately need air conditioning for the summers so that we're able to educate children and, and make up for the learning loss, and, um, and that's going to be a huge hit as well. So I, I want to continue to work with you all, and I appreciate everything that you're all doing to be here tonight. Um, I would ask that you approve the budget as is, as proposed by the School Board. However, I understand the tough position that you're in, and I am happy to see that the tax rate isn't actually going to increase by a huge amount as far as a percentage goes from last year's based on the budget that you're presenting tonight. So as folks keep saying, 27 positions, 20 possessions, 27 positions, please keep in mind that positions were actually cut last year, um, and I'm not sure about that, I can't speak to the year prior, because I haven't sat and done my homework on that one, but, um, you know, our schools are in desperate need, we need teachers, we need staff, and we need to hire these folks. So we need these folks to see that the, that we're committed to these positions, and that we're going to invite them back, uh, next year and the year after to continue to do what they need to do. So, and ask that you approve the School Board budget as is, and I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next up, Paige Trace.
Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. It's the budget. It's the budget that's before you. It's large, overwhelmingly large, some would call it bloated. The bloat, as people see it, could be the 27 new positions. I'm not an expert in some of those positions, so I won't pass judgment, other than to say that if that's the majority of the bloat, then you need to seriously address it. What I do know is yes, Council Tabor, you were the one person who saw what was possibly going to happen with reevaluations and with the tax rate and how it relates to the budget. Mayor McKecon, I would say to you that as much as you're right, that the tax rate can go down, if Roseanne Lentz does her job, and the reevaluation goes up on average 30% per home, which is not beyond the realm of impossibility, then is the tax rate going to go down 30% to offset that? No, of course not. I know that answer. Because if you have a tax rate of 15 point whatever at the moment, I think it's, I won't, 15 and change, 15.24, 15.27, um, 30% of 15 is give or take 5%. Is the new tax rate going to be 10%? I don't think so. So the problem is, and why it's so alarming to me and so many other taxpayers, is that with a budget that you have like it is this year, it's going to drive a tax rate, no matter what you do, no matter city manager, no matter how much you lower the tax rate by manipulating certain good events that have happened, um, it cannot possibly offset what is going to come in the way of revaluations. And I realize that the revaluations are not a function that we weren't reevaluated last year, they're a function of supply and demand. Portsmouth is a very, very desirable city to live in, and we've witnessed that. And so, I'm as alarmed as everybody else out in the audience, alarmed enough to be here, and many other people out there that voted for you. The bottom line is, they voted for you to protect their interests to the extent that you didn't create such a large budget that they will no longer be able to live in this city. Older people on a fixed income will not be able to afford what that tax rate is going to do with their reevaluation. And you can't lower the tax rate enough to offset the reevaluation. It will be painful, it will be devastating, it will be a reevaluation that all of you will not be able to say, "I didn't know it was coming." Because we won't let you, we are the taxpayers. Everyone in this city voted you all in to do a job for the taxpayers. And as Council, ex-councilor past Council Whalen said, "Nobody is screaming for new services. Nobody is saying, 'My garbage isn't being picked up,' or 'I need it picked up twice a week.'" Our services in this city are wonderful. So what is it that you seem to think is necessary in this city to create a budget that will have the largest increase in a long, long time? You work for the taxpayers. You talk about affordable housing. A reevaluation, a larger tax rate, or even a minor offset of the tax rate, will create a value of housing and taxing that is large enough that people won't not only be able to live here, but people won't be able to afford to move here. The very mix, the very ability for people to make this city unique, make it what it is, make it a mix of people, wealthy people, poor people, old people, young people, people of all persuasions, a really, really unique city with the open door. And you will come close to trying to destroy that uniqueness of this city. You will have a city of very, very wealthy people, and that's about it. And very, very wealthy people can be very, very boring. No offense to the very wealthy out there, but they don't make Portsmouth. And you shouldn't create a situation that will force people to move. And I thank you very much for listening to me. Now it's time for you all to do a hard thing, and that's take a good, hard look at your budget, because it is bloated, and it does need cutting. If nothing else, for the neighbor out there that lives next to you that you know damn well won't be able to afford this next year. So I thank you very much for your time, and thank you for listening to me, and you can put the budget off to have another discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up is Esther Kennedy.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. The number one job that you as a counselor need to do is this budget. And you need to understand the budget. And what I'm kind of perplexed at, as people really haven't taken the time to understand this budget. The other night, during the public session, I heard from a counselor that the skateboard park is going to be in the budget. It is not. It's in the CIP. It is not in the budget moving forward, and that's the reality. I am hearing about these positions, and I asked you if we're going to add police officers, how come we're not adding social workers? This is Mayor Kelly, you, you've brought it up. I've brought it up. We know the number one issue with police enforcement is mental health. I can tell you, I'm training my autistic children to carry a card, so if they get pulled over, they can pull it out and say, "I'm autistic." So it's for special needs, and I have not heard anything from all of you about that. Tonight we heard about the school. By School Board member Bratter, she made some accusations. And I can tell you, the council did not cut positions. The school cut positions. The School Board cut positions. And why did they cut positions? They cut positions because their enrollment is going down. There was a kindergarten teacher that got cut because they did not meet their own policies for the number of enrolled students last year. So again, if we're going to make these statements, understand the history. Why was it made? Why was that decision made by the School Board last year? I ask you to also think about the reinvest, reevaluation. The one thing that we have not heard from any of you, and very limited from the public, is that the problem, there's a reevaluation. Yes, if we reevaluate the taxes, well, it'll be divided out, and it'll go up, but not significantly. The reason it's going to go up in this city is because the commercial property is going down, and the residential property is going up. So the residents are going to have to take the burden that is lost by that commercial property. That is the issue. That is something you should be talking about. That is something you should be talking about. Now, I did bring up, there's millions, 130 million we saw as a figure in all these extra funds, in these cash funds, in municipal funds, in banks. I asked you to research that and look at it and ask yourselves, "Why is that there?" And yet we have not heard anything. We heard the other night, and I did call myself, and they said that it was going to come out in the city, that we're bringing back $1 million for insurance. How come that's not going into the general fund? What is a need to have $6 million sitting extra in insurance fund? When you know the rate in November? I ask you to research that. So I guess what I'm frustrated with is the budget is large and you all ran on keeping it so it's affordable in our city. And we know that every time we add money to people's taxes, we lose other people. That's a given. And we know that myself, as a landlord, when you raise my taxes, yes, I will raise the rent. So it's up to you, folks. But I guess what I'm frustrated with is not that the budget is 10 million. What I'm really frustrated with is you're not having those deep conversations. You're not asking, "What are those positions?" You're talking broad. I heard one of the counselors say, "The city manager should, let's look at 2 million off." But what is that, 2 million? Where are your guidance? Now, I get it. You all knew. And you didn't come up right out front and say, "This is what we're looking for." And I hope you learn from that. And the next time you do a budget, you put your parameters as a counselor out first. So that you're not playing catch-up. So tonight, I know you've made your decision, for the most part. I would just ask that at some point between now and next budget season, you have some discussions. And at some point, you really listen and say, "Why do we need this? Why do we need to go up $10 million?" Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, we have Petra Huda.
Good evening. Petra Huda, 280 South Street. Counsel, I may be considered one of your biggest fans, maybe even a groupie. I have attended all your sessions, trying to ask questions, trying to spark interest, trying to invoke thought and bring topics to your attention. Mr. Mayor, last Thursday, you smiled at me and said, "You're going to get answers to your questions." I didn't. We sat in a session, all three of us, over at the senior center, and the mayor was wondering why nobody's attending. Maybe because you don't answer any questions. You don't say anything. It's just taken in and nothing comes back out. So from my perspective, the economy's in fluctuation. Prices are rising on everything from gas to food. A recession might be on the way, and we're all being affected. During the last two years of the pandemic, as a community, we all stepped up to help the businesses survive. We stepped up as a city council, as a community, to support our business community with the only source of revenue we had, taxpayer dollars. Even while the taxpayers were dealing with the same effects of the pandemic. As a city council, you cannot control this year's property revaluations or post-pandemic shifts or decreases in commercial property valuations to residential taxpayers. The budget is the one thing you can control. This is your opportunity to make Portsmouth property taxes affordable for the residential taxpayers. And you are about to vote on the largest increase in a budget in Portsmouth has ever seen. The FY23 budget increase of $10 million by the city manager is the largest year-over-year increase probably ever. I went back 15 years. Now, you could say it's only 6.5. It doesn't matter. 6.5 is still the largest in the last at least 10 years. So when the residential taxpayers are facing the edges of COVID, inflation and valuations, and the known shift in property valuations away from residential properties, tell me as a taxpayer who has stepped up for the last two years that you need 133, now 131, or 10 million more to maintain the same services that I paid for just last year, 123, of which you returned, of which the city returned, the city departments did not spend. We had a surplus. We asked for too much. What happens to that? That goes back into the general fund. It doesn't go back to the department who asked for it, who couldn't hire the people that they asked for it. It doesn't go back to the taxpayers who paid the bill because they were there to fund it for the city. It goes back into the general fund. And yes, that's where the unassigned balance comes from. And something else for you to think about on your unassigned balance, for the last five years, we have had surpluses. That means that the city staff has overestimated the amount to cover the services that were needed. They gave money back. Now, in a regular atmosphere that's not COVID-related or pandemic or impending recession, that's one thing. But where we are now is critical. Last Thursday, the city manager made a statement that we would probably have a surplus in next year. That is very concerning to me at this point in time in our economy that we couldn't get closer to that. I was looking for answers to my questions. I guess I could go back over them. But it's probably useless at this time because, like former Counselor Kennedy said, I believe your minds are made up already. But the next thing I would ask is something you all ran on and we had pounded into our heads in the last session, is the transparency. The questions that I asked were on collective bargaining, on McIntyre, on the new positions, on the promotions, on the incoming funds, on the $1 million refund, of which I received no answers. You can tell people by putting an ADU in every backyard that this is going to make Portsmouth more affordable, Counselor Bagley and Counselor Moreau. But when Portsmouth has a $10 million increase year-over-year, it's not going to help. I urge you to think about what you're going to do and how you could still cut this. The billion dollars that came forward last week would be offset by the $900,000 if I got an answer on whatever happened to McIntyre. Because as residents, we are in the dark. We have not heard anything on that since that transpired. That offset would mean nothing. We are still back up to 133, which is the largest increase, which will go with you. I urge you, please look closer. You have till the end of the month to approve these. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. At this point, I will entertain any other speakers. Any Zoom speakers?
No.
All right.
Hang on, I think it might be.
Getting a speaker? Nope. Okay.
Sorry.
Posing the public hearing. And next up is Adoption of Proposed Budget Resolutions. Adoption of Budget Resolutions for Fiscal Year July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, Fiscal Year 23. The first is Resolution Number 10-2022, Municipal Fees, Sample Motion, Move to Adopt Resolution Number 10-2022, Municipal Fees.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Denton.
I've commented on this in the past. I'm just going to reiterate it that for any active-duty military or their dependents, the outdoor pool and the boat launch rates have been decreased. So please, if you know anyone who's in the area and looking to use the pool this summer or looking to use the boat launch this summer, their rates specifically have been decreased for the outdoor pool. If the child's under 18, it's free. If they're over 18, it's only $2. And for the boat launch, it varies whether it is a motorized craft or a non-motorized craft. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this resolution? All in favor?
Sorry, Mayor, we need to...
We have to roll call.
Oh. Roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Boylott?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackran?
Yes.
Resolution 10 passes unanimously.
Next up, Resolution Number 11-2022, General Fund Expenditures. Sample motion, move to adopt Resolution Number 11-2022, General Fund Expenditures.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion or amendments? Counselor Denton.
I have three points. These aren't amendments at this time. They're just comments. There've been numerous speakers bringing up the collective bargaining agreements when it comes to both the police and the fire getting a 4% increase. Collective bargaining does not have to be adversarial all the time. So you don't always need to sit down at the table and say, "Hey, what can we get from you if we're going to give you something?" I think this is one of those instances where if a percentage goes in, it's been deserved and it will help keep the people of Portsmouth safe. Two other comments. One is specifically for the school department. My prior four years on council, I pushed hard for the farm-to-school program. There's a USD grant. It expired. There was a plan to keep that individual onboard over the past two years. That position no longer exists. I've been reassured that there is currently funding there for a stipend for teachers. I think that's a good segue, but it's not a permanent fix. So please, for next year, consider doing more than that. And the final comment I had is, I mentioned this when the planning board presented ZAGSTER. I know it was controversial a couple of years ago, but please look into some sort of rideshare program for the following summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or amendments? Your Honor, Counselor Taber.
A question for the superintendent of schools. We heard about the positions that in the revised budget have been shifted to ESAR. Is it correct that those ESAR funds would extend forward multiple years, not just FY23?
Yes, Counselor. So the ESAR funds will be with us for the next two fiscal years easily. And the board going forward would certainly ask for some transition plan, I'm sure, in the anticipated draft of spending we have already that would contemplate covering half of those salaries in the next fiscal year and then fully the year after.
Thanks.
Any other questions and/or amendments? Counselor Bagley.
I just have a comment, and it pertains to the 4%. You know, it is a bit unusual. So I took a very deep dive into it. And it's justified and it's needed. And the reason that it's justified is both with police and fire, but particularly with fire, some of our most important people in the community, especially these last couple of years, have been underpaid. We have numerous positions that we're unable to fill. And we're losing people to other departments, high-quality people that are trained and ready to go. And we can't risk these essential services. So as Counselor Denton mentioned, you know, when you renegotiate, it doesn't have to be a battle every time. Sometimes you just have to do what is right. And I believe that that's what we're doing here. And it's not really rewarding people for their services. It's bringing them up to a level that they should expect. It's not putting them at the top in the state. It's just bringing them close to the medium, where right now they're underpaid according to all the metrics. So... But because it's not a standard or normal ask, you know, I spent a lot of time, had a lot of conversations about this, looked into it very deeply. And I strongly feel that it is warranted.
Counselor Moreau.
I'm wondering if, and I'm not sure who's the right person to answer this question, but I'm hoping someone can help explain a little further the fact that the skateboard park funds were taken from unaside fund balance during this fiscal year, but what happens on July 1 and the fact that it's in the CIP and how, I think it's because of when the work could get done, but I wonder if we could make sure we get a good explanation of that.
Sure. Happy to do that on behalf of the staff. The CIP was adopted by this council on March 8. And then the thought is, it remains an influx conversation until it's incorporated into the budget. So by virtue of it being adopted in the CIP, we would look to keep that adoption and memorialize the 2 million in FY23 for, and not to use unaside fund balance. So it is... If this council approved this budget as is, it would be adopted as part of the '23 CIP, if that makes things clear.
Could I follow up to that? So exactly, I mean, we're not then going to use that 2.2 out of the unaside fund balance? So it goes back into the, my understanding is, it goes back into the unaside fund balance, correct?
We will be using 200,000 of that to advance the design. So the remaining 2 million will go back to fund balance. We'll return it.
At which point, we could use it to overall lower the budget, could we not?
It's been part of this conversation as part of the overall process. But having it returned to fund balance is an important component of understanding how other things become offset.
Counselor Moreau, any other question?
Not at this moment. Let me process a minute.
So that you can process, so I can speak somewhat to the skateboard park. This was a collective effort on the city of Portsmouth, the residents of Portsmouth, that came outside of the CIP process, convinced the city council that this project should be prioritized above all other projects, not going through the typical CIP process. And so while it is true, we passed a budget on a year ago, or the end of this month, a year ago, that was $123 million. It did not include the $2.2 million for the skate park at that point. We added that money to the budget because we did not want to go through the CIP process. We wanted to take it from fund balance. But that is not, that money, we have the money in order to keep our AAA bond rating and to have a cushion where our city operates. It was not money that is sitting out there. When it was clear that we were not going to complete both the design and the construction, the planning board recommended to put the skate park into the CIP for this year. So when we say that, you know, it's a $123 million budget versus 126, the other half a million dollars in there, I think, was for McIntyre, a fund balance appropriation that we, definitely is not going back into the fund balance. But when we say that it was something that, you know, we passed 123, and I passed a 123 budget, and then I added $2.2 million to it, even if that comes back into the fund balance, the point around the skate park is that we had a priority list of CIP projects, and we said, "To hell with that. We're putting the skate park ahead of all of that." Didn't negate any of the other projects that we had to do. We still had to do that, all those other works like pulling up Islington Street Phase 2. those other works like pulling up Islington Street Phase Two. That was another couple million bucks that we put in last year instead of, you know, delay out. So there was a lot of projects in the CIP. We wanted to keep the skate park in the CIP so for, so we can start construction, design and construction next year. And so that's why it's now in the, it's represented in the budget in two places now. But that's only because it's in as part of fund balance now, and then when we pass the budget, it will be a part of the CIP for next year. Counselor Taber?
Just to add to that, Your Honor, we typically run thirteen percent of our general fund balance as unassigned. It's that unassigned fund balance. When we voted, the old council, you and I, Mayor, and the other councilors voted to appropriate two-point-two million for the skateboard park, that lowered our unassigned fund balance reserve to eleven percent. So looking at, it's typical that, and this is very prudent, the city waits until a fiscal year closes, looks at our surplus, and generally returns two to three million dollars for tax relief. That would be hard to do if our unassigned fund balance was down around eleven percent. When it's up around thirteen percent, it's much more comfortable to do. So I think the strategy of putting this back into the CIP, it makes sense, number one, because that's the only timetable that works. It will take a year to design the skate park. Number two, it pumps our unassigned fund balance back up to thirteen percent, so we have, we have dry powder, so to speak, for tax relief down the road. And, and I think it's a more sensible way to deal with the taxpayer dollars and still get the skate park done on the same schedule.
Thank you. Counselor Cook, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I think it's critical to remember that all of the city councilors sitting up here have been asking tough questions through the entire budget process. And sometimes when we ask those tough questions, it's not because we're sitting in a meeting, it's because we've asked for a special meeting with, I know I've asked for special meetings with the superintendent to ask very specific questions about the school budget. And the reason that we each do that, we do that kind of research, deep-dive research on the budget, is we need to make sure that when we're spending taxpayer dollars, we're spending them for a reason that's absolutely necessary. And one thing that I will say about this budget is I've asked all those tough questions of every department, behind the scenes and in our sessions as a council. And that's where you see the result tonight, I think, here. The general fund appropriation is decreased from where we started. Part of that is through that question-answer process, but we're still funding the absolutely required positions. You know, the school is, is returning seven positions in this budget, and most of those positions are IEP mandated. They're required by federal law that we fund those, those positions. You know, we have, we have regulatory requirements that we have to meet for the police, we have regulatory requirements that we have to meet in fire. The decisions that we're making are tough ones because I know that everyone's concerned about their taxes. I'm particularly concerned because I live in a household where we haven't seen cost of living adjustments in the last few years. We haven't seen pay raises because of the pandemic, because my spouse, who makes the majority of our income, works in a field that has suffered through the pandemic. So there have actually been pay decreases, you know? And so I'm sitting here looking at, you know, cost of living adjustments and pay raises that are part of our collective bargaining agreements, they're negotiated, that we have to pay as a city, and that's what drives the increase in the budget, is really our salaries that are already negotiated before we even start looking at the budget. And I know I'm not getting those increases, but I know that we have to provide them at the city level. So I'm really comfortable with the number we've ended up with. We've done a really good job, I think, asking those tough questions. And I think that we're down to the point where we, we are just approving the positions that have to be approved.
Assistant Mayor, thank you, Counselor Cook, and then Counselor Lombardi.
I am gonna, forgive me, yes, this is my first time, put forward a amendment. I'm gonna put forward an amendment to reduce forty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. Is that the quarter? Did I do this correctly?
Is that from a specific?
It is, yes, so if I speak on it, it's from the school department and is the half-year curriculum leader. I spoke of this at one of the last meetings. I believe that while it could be deemed as an important position, I believe with the change of leadership for, with a new superintendent and a new assistant superintendent, I believe that is within their new roles to decide if that position should be brought onboard.
If I can weigh in?
Yes.
Your Honor, that is part of the four-hundred-thousand-and-sixty-four dollars in proposed reductions, which are part of the current resolution number of one-hundred-and-thirty-one million. Is that correct, Steve? Nathan?
Yes.
So that reduction has been accounted for.
Can I clarify? So I read this as that we have it as a half, half-year. So I guess I would be pulling back the position for the whole year.
The, this would have provided a full-time curriculum coordinator at the half-year mark.
Okay.
Which is awkward to begin with, if you can think about that. So it would be for the next superintendent and the next school board and the next council to consider as part of the FY24.
I interpreted that incorrectly, thank you.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know that there's been question about technology expenses, and I've had conversations with some of the staff about that, and I can fully understand the need for it, but I, perhaps the city manager can give some detail about the justification of that.
For the IT restructuring, if you will? I'll take a stab, but I'm gonna ask the deputy city manager to join me at an appropriate time. We've been providing IT services essentially with a staff of one and relying somewhat disproportionately as time has gone on with a managed service provider that is outside of, outside of staff. And understanding where trends are and understanding advice given to us by folks that are expert in this field, it was our recommendation to bring forward more of an in-house, robust presence with some out-of-house consulting. But Suzanne, do you wanna fill in the blanks from here? The proposal we have made is, is our best understanding of what would meet our needs at this time.
Correct. The city has been really understaffed in this really critical department for frankly years, and we are really beginning to see the results of that over this past year. We've had more cybersecurity risks that we've had to manage, as you probably read every day, it's a huge work effort. Data is produced every moment from an electronic point of view, and that all has to be managed. And of course, we have all these transparency requirements and public records requirements, both to save and to make available records. So that takes a huge amount of kind of strategic thinking. We've had network challenges over the last year, so basically all those shortcuts that we sort of talk and lack of investment, we're beginning to see. And part of that investment really is in having the staff in-house that can strategically make the proper investments over time. And that's really why you need a CIO at this point. Every other municipality of our size, and even smaller, has a really, someone who's really grounded in that network engineering and some of those kind of deeper technical skills that frankly we, we need and we've been outsourcing, really at our risk and at our detriment. So in terms of the CIO position, it's, it's so clear from my point of view that this has been a needed addition to the department for a long time. And it's not because anyone's not performing well, it's simply what we need today is not what we needed ten years ago. It's a different and more challenging environment. And the IT structure, of course, as you know, touches every single department. If it is not working well, we have critical losses of inability to function, and you lose the value of all the staff that you have when they can't work. And then in terms of the two support technicians, we've been, again, sort of stumbling along with outside managed services, but frankly, kind of similar as Mr. Sullivan explained with regard to the legal department, if you don't bring those positions in-house, they aren't there when you really need them. And so we're finding delays, and again, we're losing inefficiencies in staff. And so I have, I could almost pull, I'm sure I could pull anyone from the staff sitting behind me, and they would tell you that they have waited days for pieces of, whether it's, you know, the desktop or access to a file, they have waited too long for the kind of help that they needed, because it's that in-house staff that really understands your systems. And we're just seeing too much turnover, frankly, with those managed services providers trying to outsource it. So it's not really functional anymore because they're, they're losing staff too. And I think if we bring it in-house, which again is similar to what other municipalities are doing and have done, I think we're gonna get a much higher level of service and, you know, will help us be more responsive and deliver services better. And frankly, we're hoping for some efficiencies over time as we can change out old software and really move to the next level and maybe automate more systems, which may actually help us on the administrative side and not have to keep adding staff, frankly, for regulatory compliance, because we can get the programs in place that will help us deliver those services. So I see it as a long-term way to help manage costs, frankly, if we make the right investments. And that takes the staff to do that and perform the work.
Thank you.
A little follow-up too. I would also say that some questions I've asked, why can't we bring everybody under the same system? And as, as clear to me that the police department has a very different system that has a level of security that is mandated by regulation for them, and as do, and the school department also has a system that is very student-oriented and by its nature, a very different system. I think that there are some issues that can be probably accomplished jointly if nothing else, purchasing and things like that.
I, I would concur both with your first part of your comments in terms of the police department has a whole special set of requirements. They are CGIS certified, they work with FBI data, very high-level security, and that kind of security costs, frankly, in terms of how you have to manage that data versus, you know, a record of this meeting, for example, which we're gonna post on the website, which if you're doing a backup, you don't have to necessarily encrypt it. You know, so there are very different requirements, and kind of the challenge of what makes a municipality particularly difficult is when you look at the broad scope of services that we deliver and our responsibilities, it's much different from, say, a small manufacturing company that might be producing a product line, but it's still a product line. And it's, they've got kind of one package of business. And what we do, when you look from the health department to public works, to police and fire, to recreation, those are very different services. And when you can get the overlap, certainly you wanna look for it, you know? If we're buying Dell products, then we want that government discount. Although I will tell you, the school sometimes gets better discounts in nature of the way certain things work. But when we can get those efficiencies, we certainly wanna do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lombardi. Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Question for Suzanne, or no?
No. Well, probably not, but possibly. A couple of quick questions and then a comment. The unassigned fund balance, since that was brought up several times tonight, the city wants to have between ten and seventeen percent. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the longtime, longtime policy of the city.
And, and what we've historically done has been somewhere right around that middle area.
Right around that thirteen, thirteen-point-seven-four is where I think we were to start this year.
And, and the reason that we do that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is much like you run your budget at home, if, you gotta prepare for a rainy day. So you don't, you know, in public comment, it came up that, you know, our budgets, usually we don't spend as much as we ask for. And I think that's a great thing, because you can't predict what the budget's gonna be exactly, especially a budget this large, because what if you don't fill a position? Or if you don't fill a position till halfway through the year? On the other hand, what if gas prices go through the roof and, you know, the city vehicles all use gas? So trying to guess exactly what the budget is is impossible. From my perspective, if I'm budgeting for my, my household, I wanna come in under-budget every year and put a little bit of money away for, for when things like COVID happen. So, you know, sitting up here as a counselor, when, when we're presented with these options and with these budgets, of course, we've got money in the bank, of course, we have reserves, of course, we have rainy day funds. What we also do as a city, which is, I don't know if it's unique, but a lot of cities don't do, is things like health insurance, we don't go year to year because they swing wildly. What we do is take a rolling average over a number of years. So some years, we kind of take money back and we put it in the bank. And then other years, we lose money and we take it out of the bank. And we do that with water, and we do that with sewer. And that stabilizes everything, so we don't see wild swings. So I just wanted to make those points here on this section of the budget, because it does have to do with the, the, the fund and why we do things the way we do it. And the best analogy I can say is to think about it like your household finances, and if you end up with a little extra money at the end of the year, that's a positive, not a negative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. I would go to Counselor Moreau.
There was talk about having surpluses on multiple years, so I don't know if anyone could possibly answer this or not. Is there an anticipated surplus for fiscal year twenty-two?
It's awfully early to tell, but early indications are that there will be a surplus in the range of one million dollars, which is a little lower than last year, but we will, when we, we close the year-end books, we will have a better sense of that in the August timeframe, and we'll bring that back to the council.
And if I might, a follow-up to that then would be, could you explain to all of us in the public exactly why that doesn't go into the general fund and how we treat it the way we do?
Well, for auditing purposes, and I, and I'm probably, I'll probably ask Judy Belanger, our finance director, to come up and chime in, if that's okay, Mayor. So the general fund is, is, is one of many funds, and I'll let Judy speak to process, but it's, Counselor Bagley's point, it's, it's, we would be not doing our jobs if we were to spend more than what was budgeted. So it's important to keep fund balance in proper perspective, but Judy, do you wanna?
Yeah, and just, just so I can kind of clarify, and I know the terminology has been a struggle for many years, for the many years that I've been doing this, when we talk about the general fund, the general fund is your fire, police, school, and general government. So we're not talking about water and sewer, special revenue funds. When there's a surplus and the comment is, or statements say, it gets folded back to the general fund, well, general fund surpluses do get close to fund balance. So that's your equity. So, and it does go back to the taxpayers year after year, because year after year, we use a portion of that fund balance to offset the taxes. In the proposed FY23 budget, we're using two-point-eight million dollars. So, and like Counselor Bag, Black, excuse me, Bagley said, I refer to that a lot. It's very similar to your home budget. You know, you anticipate, maybe an expense that comes up, or you anticipate, I'm gonna need to buy new tires this year for my car, and then you go in and you get your tires checked, and they said, oh, no, you can go another six months. So, and that happens throughout the year. Or your refrigerator breaks down that you didn't anticipate. So that is the, you know, on a smaller scale, that is the big budget in the general fund. So if we anticipate a surplus, we do anticipate the two-million-dollar surplus this year by not utilizing that two-million dollars from the skateboard park. So that will fold back to fund balance, which will help in maintain the unassigned fund balance that we wanna maintain. balance that we want to maintain between that 10% and 17%. That is what has got us through COVID. That is what has gotten us through other situations by having that ability to act quickly in emergency situation.
Thank you.
And if I miss something, be more than happy.
Thank you, Judy. Any other questions for Judy while she's up here? Counselor Bagley?
I'm going to take this advantage because of how well we run our finances. I want to congratulate you and the finance department on the 11th time in a row of getting AAA bond rating, which for those of you at home that don't know, that's the very highest you can get. And it's a little bit like your credit score. It means we have a perfect credit score, so if we borrow money, we get the best possible interest rates.
Thank you.
So congratulations on that.
Any other questions for Judy or congratulations? All right. Any other questions from the council on the proposed resolution? I had a few thoughts before we do a roll call vote. 27%, or 27 cents on the tax rate is not something that I take lightly. It does represent a 1.78% increase, and that's to Counselor Taber's credit because we're getting a fair amount of federal funding, other sources of funds, in order to, to keep that, that tax rate lower. A speaker today stated that we couldn't, and I, and I, I'm not going to mention her by name because I don't know if I'll get the quote right, but stated that we won't be able to lower the, the, the tax rate enough to make up for, for valuations. And I don't know if that was the intent of, of what she was trying to say, but I think in there rings true. For a majority of folks, the valuations are how people experience the majority of their, 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 their tax increase or decrease. What we're talking about here, it would increase the taxes if the valuation stayed the same of 1.78%. On a time when inflation is 8%, I think that's a decent number. But to Counselor Taber's point, it take, doesn't really take into account the revenues that we can't really rely on for, for next year. But I do want to, I guess, challenge the assumption that we're not thinking about revaluations. This council is thinking about revaluations and understands that COVID has shifted how people work, where they work, and Portsmouth is an attractive place before, and I think it's an even more attractive place after for people to move to. So because of that fact, earlier this year, we increased the senior income, total income numbers, we increased those to, to keep up with the increases in, in social security. But we also increased the total assets that you can have in order to apply for it. The amount of times that I would knock on somebody's door or have somebody talk, yeah, I applied for that program and I didn't cut it because I had $200,000. And it was $175,000 before of total available assets that you had before you were not able to apply or really qualify for the program. We didn't double that. We increased that to 500,000 because we understood that if valuations, which we didn't do the previous year, were going to happen, we wanted to make sure that more people than ever before were able to qualify for that. But that discussion is a separate discussion from the budget. And I'd like to go through just a few things in the budget that, in terms of, because the focus has been on, really the focus has been on the, you know, the positions. The city managers requested a half-year position in terms of digital engagement. The amount of people that have reached out to me that have not seen something or not heard something, despite our efforts, in terms of services that could be improved, I do think that we as a city could not tell people what's, you know, what great things we're doing, but provide more opportunities to come and tell us what we're doing wrong, what we could be improving. We need to be in that, that field to be able to, to really engage in those ways. IT, now this is something that I pushed back on pretty aggressively at the work session. I could not understand how we would have an IT department of, you know, from, from, from nothing to five, but it's not really true. We had IT working before. What we're contemplating is a CIO to oversee and then folks that are working underneath and changing a couple of positions internally to report into this new department. I hope, and I am, I'm supporting this because I, I see it as a hope, that as we grow as a city and people require more services, that we will use an IT department to begin to bend the cost curve of providing services to people. An example that I still don't understand, and I haven't done it, because I went there once, I went down to get my parking app updated and get my discount and I didn't have the right form and I just never went back. I got two kids, I just didn't go back to get my 50% or my, you know, 50 cent discount off it. So I don't think that a city that, I have to come and register my car and tell them that my car is here, should have to have a updated, you know, residency form in order to get on a whitelist for an app. That's something that we need a CIO to be able to have the systems talk to one another, and that's something that we can't have the CIO running the help desk tickets. And there's, if you look in the budget, there's an equal reduction in terms of consulting services that we're paying for. So that's something where I changed my mind on during this budget session, not because, you know, I, I, it's not because I, I am rolling over on it, but I've seen a difference in why we should be supporting that and the amount of investment that we're going to need to make in IT. And that's just forgetting all of the fact that, you know, there was a week when we first all got sworn in that we didn't have, you know, IT, we didn't have email access. So I've come around on, on that. The, the next one would be the inspection, oh, sorry, the economic director. That was a grant-funded position, did a great job. That's another position that we now have to, that we have to fund. I think there was a, a pretty lively debate during this process where we were talking about, you know, potentially doing more, not just for the chamber, but for other businesses outside of the chamber. I think in the budget seasons to come, we should, we should address that. The inspection department, there's not a person up here on this dais that didn't hear about the inspection department. I think Shanti's done a fantastic job. He had a great presentation that we have another inspector to come up and be able to deliver, you know, the services that people expect. I think that, you know, again, when people say there was, you know, there's no problem with services, I heard a few people asking me about the inspection department and helping that. So that's a way that we're going to try to address that. The health department, you know, we've learned a lot in the health department over the past two years. COVID aside, there's a lot that goes into inspecting outside, outside dining and the increased ask that we've come along with that, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. And then public works, you know, I, I went back and I looked at all of the positions since 2008. And it's also interesting, in 2008, there was a recession, you know, maybe we, I hope not, but maybe we enter something like that again. In 2008, the council gave the direction to lower staff by 2% and then 3% in the following years. You know, we have less public works people now than we did even in 2008, and we have community campus, you know, I'm sure that Paul McCacken looking down would be upset to know that his park has contributed directly to the increase of public works and the requirement to maintain that, that beautiful piece of, of property. But there's a lot that we do now as a city, and it's not just, you know, planting more pretty flowers, but there's a lot that, that goes into, into that and much more opportunities for us to be able to, or require us to, to work. And so I am, I understand that, you know, I think how this differs from a, a, a household budget is that a household budget, that's your money. The city's budget is still your money. And so we have to use it wisely. We can't take it for granted. We need to be as judicious as possible with that money. I, I believe that this budget with these changes is as judicious as possible as we can to continue to provide the services and more services that the city is going to need. And if I can speak simply to the, the, the police and the fire, you know, I think the, in, in terms of the 4% increases, I would echo that Counselor Denton, you know, we are in this together. You don't do something without it being, it being noticed for sure, but, you know, the fire department did a lot in the last two years without it being, you know, not expecting a, a 4% raise in that. They did it because it was their jobs and they found, you know, we found out that they are lower than the average of surrounding communities. I think it is well within our ability right now, and it's evident in the fact that they have not been able to fill those open positions that we are underpaying in the market. And the same thing, I believe, goes for the police department. There wasn't an option to call out with COVID and, and the amount of work that, that goes into, into keeping us safe, we shouldn't take it for granted. We shouldn't lose, look at this as a lose-lose. I think that this is an opportunity to make sure that we have the safety services that, that impact our city and keep our city safe, do the job that they were, that we asked them to do, that I think in recent times is put into light in a way that we'd never want to think about. So I appreciate both the commissions bringing that forward, and I believe it's something that, that, that I can support. And so, you know, I, I don't want to close by, you know, arguing about numbers, but this, a budget does reflect our values and it reflects the values of the city council, but also our city. I have been impressed with the questions that the council has asked, I've been impressed with the answers that have been given to those questions. I believe that this is not a one-year budget, but has to reflect the next two years, and I look forward to those conversations and hopefully beginning those conversations a little bit earlier next year so that we can have a better understanding of where we need to, to go as a city. So if there's not anything else after that really long chat, I'll ask Kelly for the roll.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Resolution number 11 passes eight to one.
Next up, resolution 12, Water Fund Expend, or 12-2022 Water Fund Expenditures Sample Motion Moved to Adopt Resolution 12-2022 Water Fund Expenditures.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Moreau?
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I, paying for water is, can be painful in the city, but we need, you know, this, this is all sort of a separate whole part of our budget. So these figures are covering the services and because of all the increase in technology and the security that you need in these days around water services, that it is important that we make sure we have the right people, and I think that this budget will help us do that.
Have a roll call vote?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Resolution number 12 passes unanimously.
Next up, resolution number 13-2022 Sewer Fund Expenditures Sample Motion Moved to Adopt Resolution Number 13-2022. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Counselor Lombardi and Counselor Bagley?
We now have a, a sewage plant that is a highly technical plant, and it, it takes really well-prepared, educated engineers to run that. And it's a, it's a matter of pride to me, and I think to the city, that this plant is so capable and is ready to serve Portsmouth in the future. We also have a plant in, in, at Pease, and, and so I just, I just have to say that this is, sewage is expensive, but it's absolutely necessary. And I think, I think we, I think that justifies these costs.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor, in, in more or less confirming Counselor Lombardi's statements. But, you know, we can be a, a community that decides we want to plow our sidewalks or not, or we can be a community that decides we want to have trash pickup or not, but we can't be a community that doesn't have sewer. There's many federal and state regulations on what we can and can't do, and it's, it's expensive, it's challenging, it requires a dedicated, highly-trained team of, of people to make it all work, but we don't really have a lot of options. It's something that we have to do. So with that said, I, that's just my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Any other questions and or comments? With that, can we please call the roll?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Motion for Resolution Number Three passes unanimously.
Resolution number 13.
13, I'm sorry.
Res, I'm sure you had it down right. Resolution number 14-2022, Special Revenues Debt Service Fund and Committed Fund Balances for Necessary Expenditures Sample Motion Moved to Adopt Resolution Number 14-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Thank you. One quick comment. I had inquired about adding $50,000 from ARPA funds to go towards the COVID Response Task Force to help recreate that recovery plan. However, that would have required a public hearing, being ARPA funding. I know after we pass the budget, we'll be dealing with the ARPA funds, so I simply ask that funding be considered for the COVID Response Task Force going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Denton. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Kelly, can you please call the roll?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Resolution number 14 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 15-2022 Investment Policy Sample Motion Moved to Adopt Resolution Number 15-2022.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Kelly, do you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Resolution number 15 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have the city managers' items which require action. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first of three items is consideration of a parking agreement renewal with the Middle Street Baptist Church. We've enjoyed an agreement with them since 2013 where the city leases 17 spaces for the purpose of allowing certain library staff to use those spaces during the library's business hours, for which the Middle Street Baptist Church invoices the city $1,000. Historically, the term of the agreement has been for one year, and that's, that's, it's been a great working relationship. In, in consultation with the church, for both parties and for ease of administration, we are the church, for both parties and for ease of administration, we are both recommending amending this agreement to change the term from annual to indefinite, with either party having the right to terminate the agreement upon 30 days' written notice. Mayor, you had asked me before, was that the case in our previous agreements? Assistant City Attorney Jane Farini tells me that before, there was a clause, provision for, with cause, that if the city were to breach the agreement, the church could terminate with 30 days' notice if the city did not fix that breach after being noticed. And now, simply as proposed as an indefinite-type lease, there is a consideration for without cause, just simply because at any point either party could decide this doesn't work. But as mentioned, we've enjoyed a good relationship, and we don't see a reason why we wouldn't continue going forward. And the church board has agreed to that.
Any questions from the council? All in favor? Oh, no motion. Oh. Your Honor, I move that we approve the Middle Street Baptist Church Parking Use Maintenance Agreement renewal as presented.
Second.
All in favor of Counselor Taber's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up would be a process to release funds that are currently in the city trust related to the Portsmouth 400th in the amount of $9,166. These funds are requested for various projects, specifically two projects that are ready for invoicing now, one in full, one in part. One is a comic book version of a history book for, in celebration of the 400th, and the other one is referencing the project known as 101 Objects, the book. So with approval by the council to authorize this expenditure, I would take the request formally to the trustees at their June 14 meeting, along with Managing Director Valerie Rochon.
I'd like to make a motion that we vote to authorize the expenditure of $9,166 from the 400th Anniversary Trust for projects referenced in the materials.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a question for the City Manager. I would anticipate we're going to see a lot more requests like this over the coming year as money is appropriated from this fund. Will we be seeing them periodically, do we think, or do you think we're going to see a kind of a larger request all at once?
If I may, there is, I will say only $36,000 or thereabout in the trust balance for the 400th. The remainder will be separate and managed by the 501(c)(3), so when those funds are depleted, we won't be coming in this fashion to the council for approval. The money that the trust holds is specific to programming and specific events. It is not for administration or typical operation and maintenance, if you will. So these are for specific programs and projects, and for which there will be a finite number of requests.
Thank you.
No more questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The third and final request this evening is a temporary construction license for the property located at 75 Congress Street. It's known as the Franklin Block. They are performing exterior brickwork improvements to the building. You may have noticed that the sidewalk has been encumbered with pass-through staging, and they're nearing their 30-day consecutive working approval. And for that, they need to seek an extension which comes to the council. The owner has experienced delays and seeks 30 more days to complete Phase 1 of the project, which is where it is currently staged, and that would be from June 8 through July 7. And then Phase 2 would move the scaffolding to the sidewalk in front of the other half of the building, and that would be from July 8 through September 9. And you'll see the map that's involved in the write-up here. Typically, when there is pass-through, walking permitted, the fee is typically waived, and both legal and planning have reviewed and approved what this property owner is looking to do.
Do we have the sample motion to move to refer to the, move to authorize the City Manager to waive the license fee and execute and accept the temporary construction license to encumber the sidewalk with pass-through staging at 75 Congress Street?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is the Consent Agenda. I did have a question, though. We might want to suspend the rules on the City Manager's informational items, report from the cemetery, co-chair regarding, is this a, an actual reporter presentation or just an informational item? And if it is, I see Sue in the back. You're here? Okay, all right. We will, I do try to see if there's somebody in the audience that's, that might be here and need to be here. Okay. Next up, then, is the Consent Agenda. The proper motion for adoption of the Consent Agenda is to move to adopt the Consent Agenda. We have a request from Nina Braun from Local Anchor 603 to install a projecting sign. We have a request from Kelly Riley, R&amp;R Partners, to install a projecting sign at 54 Daniel Street. We have a letter from Alan Schultz, Portsmouth Professional Firefighters, Local 1313, requesting permission to hold the Phil to Booth Toll Booth in Market Square on August 13 from 8:00 to 4:00. A letter from Monte Bohannon, President of the Portsmouth Halloween Parade, requesting permission to hold the Portsmouth Halloween Parade on Monday, October 31 at 7:00 p.m. Requests from Brian Miller, New England Run for the Fallen, requesting permission to come through Portsmouth on Sunday, August 21, 2022. A letter from Lilia Potter Schwartz, Race to Educate, requesting permission to hold the Sixth Annual Race to Educate on Saturday, July 30, 2022. A letter from Richard Mason, Veterans Count, requesting permission to hold the Pack and Boots 5K Road Race at Pease on Monday, July 4, 2022. And then a letter from Sandy Clark Caddy, Seacoast African American Cultural Center, requesting permission to hold the Juneteenth Parade on Sunday, June 19, at 20, 20:20 at 11:00 a.m. Again, sample motion is moved to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, email correspondence. Sample motion moved to accept and place on file.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on to the council. I think we can charge through unless somebody needs a quick bathroom break. Yep, all right, let's do a bathroom break. All right, five minutes, and we'll be back. Welcome back. Next up is me. First, an appointment to be considered, reappointment of Martin Ryan to the HDC. He'll come up at the next meeting. And then appointments to be voted, appointment of Herb Lloyd to the Sustainable Practice Blue Ribbon Committee, and the reappointment of Margot Doring, Reagan Rudig, and Jonathan Wyckoff to the HDC. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. And second, I'd just like to say I've worked with these people on the HDC. They're all really good. And Martin Ryan coming up next time as well. They're excellent, excellent. I was going to say counselors, but they're excellent commissioners.
Thank you, Counselor. They weren't so good that you didn't request to get back on the HDC.
Yeah, you're right.
I appreciate your work. Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am on the HDC, and I will say that they are continuing to do great work, and I am enjoying working with them. They're wonderful commissioners.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, City Council members. The Assistant Mayor, you're up.
Your Honor, I would make a motion, sample motion is to move to refer to Legal Department to draft an ordinance for the first reading at the June 21, 2020 City Council meeting. That would add a City Council representative to the Trees and Public Greenery Ordinance. If I can get a second, I can do that. Thank you. Arbor Day really inspired me, so I would thank you, Your Honor, for your absence. I think that the Trees and Public Greenery Committee really does a lot of work in our city and a lot, and it has a huge impact on projects, on development, on DPW, and just, you know, making our city a green city. And looking into that, we realized there is nothing in the ordinance that puts a City Council member, representative on that. And so I would bring forward to Legal and to this council that position to add. I think it's important that we get a report back more than once a year. I think it's important that this committee knows how much that they mean to this council and to the people that sit in this seat.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Any questions or comments? Counselor Bagley?
I appreciate the Assistant Mayor bringing this up. Some people may know my aunt is on this committee, and I joke with her quite often because there's nobody out there that loves trees and greenery more than her, other than maybe the other members of the community, of the committee. So every time a tree comes down, they have to approve it, and they do it begrudgingly so. I know sometimes when diseased trees come down or aged trees that have reached their end of life come down, there's some upset members in the community that think that, they don't think that there's a good reason. So I just want to reassure the public that the people on this committee care about trees as much or more than anybody else in the community.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Lombardi?
Yeah, a neighbor of mine, Peter Lachlan, of course, is involved in that, too. He's an amazing asset to the city, has provided trees for the city in many areas, and so there's that. And then also, the plan for the city to plant, is it 1,000 trees, Peter? 500 trees?
I like 1,000.
I think it's the worst-kept secret in Portsmouth, but it's 400 trees for the 400th.
Yeah, okay. I had the number wrong, but it's great. And I would say the arborist and the, all the tree people working for Public Works, they're great. I bother them, and I talk to them and ask them questions.
Any other questions or? Any other questions or confessions of going against the charter and interfering with our public works? Well, I will say that it is a, just in terms of the process, this will be the first reading. There will be public comment for that. There will also be a second reading and potentially a third reading moving through that. I think I share the sentiments up here that the committee is a, it's a lot of people that love Portsmouth and also love trees. It's not an easy task to be able to decide where the tree needs to come down. But when your city is approaching 400 years, you have to think of a timeline when trees will regrow and when they're diseased. And, you know, it's a tough position. I think, at the very least, the discussion around this ordinance, whether or not it passes or not, is a good one to have, bringing forth much discussion around a committee that kind of flies under the radar until somebody sees a sign on a tree and says, what's that number? Where am I going to call? And so I think it'd be great for Portsmouth to better understand it. So thank you, Assistant Mayor, for bringing that forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up is Councilor Tabor. Community Power Information Night at 3:00. Oh, I won't give away the whole update.
It could be that short. Thanks, Mayor. As you know, we voted to join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. It's to take advantage of New Hampshire's new statutes that allow communities to aggregate their electricity demand for cheaper and greener power. And since we've done that, we haven't really had a chance to have an information night and inform the community and to get feedback. So the Energy Committee has partnered with Portsmouth Smart Growth, and they volunteered to have an event. And the notice that I put in the packet about it will be going out in all the water and sewer bills. So you probably will be hearing about it. We're excited about it, and you're all invited.
Councilor Denton.
One thing that Councilor Tabor left out that I'm excited about is the, one of the speakers is Sam Evans-Brown, who is, or at least was, NHPR's podcast Outside Inns host for many years.
That's exciting. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Councilor Tabor, who hope to be there. Next up is Councilor Bagley with the COVID Response Task Force as a verbal update.
Yeah, so, thank you, Your Honor. I think we're all quite impressed with the results of the task force that were created by the mayor and the former Assistant Mayor during the last council term. And they did a lot to make our community better. So what I am proposing, and I think we'll have it in the next packet, is that we do something similar, but where the focus is on mental health and recovery. And I'm just going to read out something here. "The impact of COVID has been felt throughout our community. Therefore, I propose establishing a COVID Response Task Force for six months to evaluate the challenges and identify low-cost, high-impact recovery solutions that use ARPA monies. The CRTF will be composed of citizens of Portsmouth, local nonprofit representatives, and the city manager as an ex-official member who can incorporate city staff and resources. The initial objective of the CRTF would be to meet, discuss, and survey the needs of the community and incorporate their findings into a recovery plan. The CRTF will be fashioned so that input from residents is well-defined and simple to do, with public meetings at various locations and times throughout the city. There would also be a dedicated webpage on the city site that outlines the proceedings and has a contact button for residents to make recommendations and suggestions. The CRTF will allow the city of Portsmouth to build a strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support the long-term growth and opportunity." And with that said, if...
And hold on. Just, Councilor Bagley, is that a, can we make that a motion? That you will be proposing this, the creation? I just want to make sure at the next meeting we have the ability to bring forth nominations.
So it wasn't in the packet? It was as a verbal report? So can I make that a motion, or should we make the motion at the next?
You can make it a motion if you choose to.
Okay.
What you just said, if there's a second.
And then I'll speak to it. So although it's a rather long motion, I guess I have a good reputation for making them that way. What we want to do is have some community members and nonprofit leaders organize together. So if you are interested in being a part of this, or if you know somebody that you think should be a part of this, please reach out to us over the next couple of weeks. And then at the next council meeting, most likely, we will appoint members to this COVID Recovery Task Force. And what we want to do is really look for examples where we can create the most good, the most recovery for the least amount of cost. And I think the best way to do that is to get the people that really know the challenges and needs of the community in a room together to discuss what the different options are, what the different problems are, potentially how certain nonprofits are dealing with them, what's worked, what hasn't, and what can be replicated throughout the community. Because, you know, one of the big challenges we have is with the schools and COVID recovery. The kids really took the brunt of it, but everyone, there's nobody that came through this unscathed. So I think what we need to do is take a good, hard look by the right people and identify what we can do with some of the ARPA funding to make Portsmouth a better place.
Thank you, Councilor Bagley. Any questions or comments? You, Kate. Or Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I love the idea of delving into mental health and the council talking about COVID relief in terms of mental health. I also think it's important that we address all the issues of pandemic recovery. So I absolutely, Councilor Bagley, I think this is a fantastic idea. I think it gets us somewhere. It gets us talking about recovery in one aspect of recovery. But I think it's also important that we discuss other areas and other requests for ARPA funds, which I know is going to come up pretty soon. So I would like to request that we also have kind of, some kind of reporting back to the council around what are the plans from the staff viewpoint around ARPA funds? And what requests have we received that are non-staff requests? Because I know we've received requests from committees as well, so that we kind of have a baseline of what the requests are currently. Because I think it's critical when a committee like this is formed or meets that we have realistic expectations for how much ARPA funding is actually available.
Any other questions, comments? Councilor Tabor.
What would be the deliverable for this group? Would it be a report with recommendations? Would it be a meeting with the council, a work session with the council? That might be good to give some thought to for all of us.
Yeah, and so when I came up with this idea, and I had some help from members of the community who work in the nonprofit sectors and who are just community members that are retired, let's say, from teaching and areas like that. What I'm concerned with is we don't know what we don't know, not being, well, at least in my case, not being a mental health professional, not being a nonprofit person. So I didn't want to put too many constraints on this. I wanted to kind of give this group of people a chance to talk amongst themselves, come up with some ideas, and, you know, really look to get the most value for our dollar if we are going to be using some of this money. And one of the things that immediately came to mind was the Sunrise Squad at Little Harper School. So that was created just before the pandemic. Every Friday, they have a group of kids that gather K through 5th grade, and the fire department comes in some Fridays, the library comes in some other Fridays. And this, in theory, could be replicated to New Franklin School in Don Darrow, but then the pandemic hit, so I don't think that ever had a chance to happen. So my thought is, that's a relatively low-cost activity, but it's had a huge impact for those kids. So what else is out there that we can do? One of the things that comes up over and over again is transportation. So can we identify areas with coast where we can do things better? Or, you know, talk with nonprofits and really have them identify for us, what are the little things we can do that would make a really big difference?
Thanks.
I don't know if that answers the question at all, but that's the concept. And the deliverable would be recommendations to the council on where they think we should spend the money.
Right.
So tie that back to Councilor Cook's, you know, as ARPA funds, as we move into the discussion of ARPA funds, this would be one aspect of that. Other aspects would be certainly staff recommendations and council deliberations and public input of folks that are not represented in this body. But I do think that it was effective to see the work of the last council's task force because they were reacting acutely to a problem. Now, this is maybe not acute problems, and so it might be more difficult to find the same resolution to those. But they are problems that hopefully the applicants to this committee will be adept at consolidating on behalf of the council and reporting back to the council as part of the discussion on ARPA. So as that becomes more clear, we could probably put an end date for this in terms of a report back. And then just in terms of a practical matter, this will be a Blue Ribbon Committee, and the appointments will be made or will be brought forth at the next meeting. And so applications then need to be due by a week from the following, a week from next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday in order to do that. If we find that that's not enough time, based on the applicants that we receive by that point, it might not make it to the agenda, and we'll have a report back further stating that. So with all of that, all in favor of this, or the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Councilor Bagley. Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read out this sample motion and then explain it a little bit. I move to schedule first reading for revisions to the Ethics Ordinance at the June 21, 2022 City Council meeting.
Second.
From its inception, the Governance Committee has been working on the Ethics Ordinance. It's been a lot of work, and there's a lot of detail that's gone into thinking about ethics. I thank my fellow counselors who sit on the Governance Committee, who've really led this charge, Councilor Tabor and Councilor Lombardi, and the Legal Department, who worked very hard to respond to our questions and concerns. We've had long discussions with people who've participated in the process. We've tried to get the best possible advice that we could get around the current Ethics Ordinance and potential changes. And you'll see in your packet a revised ordinance, a clean copy, and you'll see the redlined version also in your packet, which is quite extensive. The detail on changes is quite extensive. So what I'm asking is that at our next council meeting, that we start to consider these changes to the Ethics Ordinance. So I'm asking for first reading, and these are the recommendations that were passed by the Governance Committee at our meeting last Monday.
So this was seconded, Councilor Lombardi, and then Councilor Bagley.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, the amount of input we had was a lot. We had a number of people, past counselors as well as residents, come and talk about the ordinance. And then we also had past mayors for a meeting, and they weighed in on it, too. It was all very, very good input, and we really struggled over some of the parts of it and have to really compliment the legal counsel of both Suzanne and Bob on this. So it was, I think it's a good product at this point.
Councilor Bagley.
So, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make some general comments about the Governance Committee and not maybe necessarily just this ordinance. You can watch all of the meetings on YouTube, and they're great, and there's a lot of detail. Because I know there's been some concern in the public that they're difficult to attend times. But the reality is, when you schedule a meeting, there's no time that works for everyone. Some people have young children, and some people work second shift. But what you can do is you can watch the movies on YouTube. They're all posted there. And then if you have feedback, you don't necessarily need to give it in the meeting. I think this Ethics Ordinance took four or five meetings, if I'm not mistaken. So there's plenty of time to go to the city website. And if you go to the city council thing, you can send us an email, or you can send one counselor an email with your suggestions or comments. So I think this Governance Committee's been doing great work, and if somebody feels that it's difficult to attend the meetings, I don't think things move so fast or so quickly that you couldn't give your feedback, you know, a day or two later after watching the YouTube video. But I think they're doing excellent work, and I applaud what you've done so far.
Councilor Tabor.
Yeah, just to amplify some of those points, in the process of redoing the Ethics Ordinance, we really did listen to all the participants in the last Ethics process. And there's more due process now, and I think that makes it a stronger Ethics Ordinance. In other words, there's additional steps. If somebody is accused, that they can present their evidence and appeal. And we have an investigator, an investigative stage, which is kind of new and novel, but I think it answers some of the concerns that people who've been through our Ethics Process raised. In the old process, it's the, the burden is on the person making the complaint to build the whole case, and there's no objective third-party fact-finding. So this idea came out, and I think it's great to put it into the public hearing process so we can hear what the public thinks. I mean, the real purpose of an Ethics Ordinance is to, if there is concern about anyone in our committees or in the council or elected officials acting in self-interest, that there's a process to examine that. And that's just important for trust in our government. So I think we did the best humans can do. It can never be perfect, but I think it's better than what we had. So I look forward to hearing what everybody has to say in the public.
Councilor Denton and Councilor Moro.
Quick comment, I guess two. One is I like the majority of the changes. And the comment simply, there's actually enabling legislation out there, which, if adopted, would require anyone who's found violating the ethics of just being removed from the council. So it eliminates the council's judgment, whether it's going to be an admonishment or placed on file. So I'm just putting that out there for food for thought.
Councilor Denton. Councilor Moro.
I just would like to say I really appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this. I think that we heard many times during the campaign how much we really needed to take a look at the Ethics Ordinance and put together something that would work. And from being part of writing many ordinance on the land use side, you don't always get it right the first time or the second time, but just knowing that we can start with some changes and see how they work and then keep evaluating from there, I always think is an important way to look at every ordinance that we have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Cook, for the work that you put into, well, the committee put into this. I think there is a lot of good in here, and there's a lot of good discussion topics, especially some of the larger departures of the Ethics Investigation Officer. I think that... that the public is a good stress test to figure out what we've missed. I'd never underestimate that there's something always missed, regardless of how well-intentioned it is, so that we have ample opportunity to review and hear these changes. And gets Bob's opinion about all this in public is a positive thing for the city. So thank you, Counselor Cook. With that, I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, approval of grants and donations. First, we have the acceptance of donation from Alex Chokwit for the Portsmouth Police Honor Guard of $5,000. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the donation for the police honor guard as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? So there was, we've had discussion in the past on police donations in particular. I believe that the city manager is working on a formal rule or regulation. But in the meantime, we are stressing, or the goal is to have both transparency on who the donation is from and what the donation is for. Certainly want to keep up the ability of the police honor guard to receive this money, but I think more work is still done. Is there anything else?
That's correct. We plan to bring forward what we are crafting as a donation form so that we can articulate what it is that various entities receive, and to your point, who are the recipients of that donation. But these three in particular seem to be very clear and easy to bring forward to you for consideration.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Next is the acceptance of donation from Deirdre Forte to the cemetery is of $5. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the donation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Third is the acceptance of donation from Stephen T. Pesci to the Portsmouth 400th of $40. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the donation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have an informational item from the city manager.
We do. We have the one informational item from the cemetery committee regarding the fabulous results of their recent headstone cleaning project. For those of you who have the ability to see it in your packet, it is pretty transformational to see what kind of work could happen in just two hours. And so I know that the group looks forward to more projects like this. It's interesting that at the Memorial Day Parade, the commander of the USS Cheyenne mentioned to Sue Sterry, the cemetery committee chair, that the men and women on the ship have volunteer hours that they need to fulfill, and they would love to participate in something like this. So we will be, I think we'll all speak for that committee, and we will certainly take them up on that offer, and there will be other such projects moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, they, the crew of the USS Cheyenne are stationed at the shipyard, and we, even though the Supreme Court thinks otherwise, we have been deemed the host city for the USS Cheyenne. So we're lucky to be that host city and grateful for the work that they will do. Any miscellaneous business, including business remaining unfinished previous? Whoa.
That's a lot of hands.
You do have a non-public to go back to after this. Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to remind everyone, the public, we're having a big fundraiser this Thursday, June 9th, at the 3SR Space from 6:00 to 10:00. This is to flip the switch. This is to fundraise the lighting for the skate park. There's been a lot of effort. There's a lot of skate decks that have been painted, painted by local Portsmouth High School students. Some of their businesses in town, like Ben's Autobody, and, I mean, some of these decks are real pieces of art. So there'll be, there'll be a silent auction going on throughout the night. There'll be a live auction closer to the end of the night. There'll also be raffle prizes as well. It's a $10 entry for your suggested donation for anyone over 18, and it's free admission for anyone under 18. There's going to be a band. There'll be cocktails available and everything. But it should be a really fun evening for a great cause, and I encourage everyone to attend.
Counselor Blaylock. Counselor Lombardi?
I just have a question. What became of the Committee for the Arts for donations of art? We had a donation of a, something a few meetings ago, and then it brought up a discussion of, we need a review of public art. And has anything happened with that?
Let me take a stab at that. There was an offer for essentially public art in the form of a monument to the 400th.
Right.
And similar to the way in which we dealt with the last two donations of public art, the sculpture that's in Paul McHickorn Park, and there's a watercolor hanging in City Hall. Sean Clancy is taking up the mantle from Nancy Karma and working through the ad hoc process. So we will bring it back through that, through that channel, if you will, and that may spark a conversation of a more permanent process for the receipt of public art.
Thank you. Counselor Bagley?
Counselor Blaylock stole my thunder. I was just going to tell everybody to be there Thursday night.
Oh, wow. All right.
Wait, you just said Thursday. He said Wednesday. Which day is it?
Thursday.
Well, congratulations to the boys' track and field for their state title. We'll be welcoming them in on the 21st. And good luck to all of the teams competing, both baseball and lacrosse, and everyone else. Wish you luck on your upcoming events. With that, if there's no other, we will adjourn this meeting back into the non-public.
We move to adjourn to non-public, I believe.
Parliamentary inquiry?
Do you have to? Go to the non-public? The answer is yes.
Well, don't we need to state the purpose?
Your Honor, I think that Counselor Tabor was very alert to have picked this point up. Because the reason for this extended non-public session didn't occur until today in the morning, it didn't appear on the agenda. So I would like to announce that the reason for the extended non-public session is to deal with items in litigation for which the city legal department received information this morning that needs to be discussed with the city council.
Good job, Counselor Tabor. So--
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.